Echo Plex Media, boo.
I see the same people every other day, but we never say hey, cause we're never looking the way. Or my face was in my notebook. We passed each other didn't look. These are the people of the towns, of the towns, the towns of the towns. And large cities are just a bunch of big, small towns, big, small towns. Overlapping side by side, big, small towns. I see new people every day. Everyone's on their way, doing the things that fill their day. And I'm going places too, doing the things that I do with my time. We are the people of the towns, of the towns, the towns of the towns. And large cities are just a bunch of big, small towns, big, small towns. Diagonal top two bottom, big, small town. Be nice to the people of the towns. Once in a while, look around, cause what's going around is coming around. What came around is coming around. What's going around is coming around. Big, 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 small towns. Word gets around in the big, small towns. Big, 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 small towns. Word gets around in the big, small towns. Big, 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 small towns. Word gets around in the big, small towns.
Everybody, welcome to Down Ballot. We do the show live every Tuesday at 7:30 PM Pacific right here on Twitch. That's twitch.tv/echoplexmedia. You can support this project at echoplexmedia.com. Click the support tab and find your favorite way to support the project. It's the beginning of the month and not the end of the month, so I don't care which one you choose. All pretty much worked out the same to me. I'm producer Dave and you can find me on Grindr.
This is the councilman. You can find me as always at T H E underscore councilman on the X device. You can also find me dropping 20 bucks to Echo Plex Media once a month because that's my privilege.
It's called pay to play.
It is actually. I do it just so I can be on this show. There's really no other reason.
It's cheap to buy a podcast on here.
Yes, very much so. So I keep you in good beer, I suppose.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe a gram or something. I don't know.
No, I probably spend that money at the Indian market buying stuff to make fabulous curries. This week, we're going to do something a little different. Usually the post game only of this show is a thing we do called public comment, which isn't, doesn't mean we read your comments. I don't read the YouTube comments or the podcast reviews. I don't do any of that. This is a local government meeting. So I was kind of looking around today. I found a bunch of stuff, but I thought maybe this would be the best one, cause this is an arc we've been following. There's a, you know about Bridgette Ziegler in Sarasota, Florida from Moms for Liberty? Do you know anything about her?
I'm familiar with her, I think through this network and some other news outlets.
So she was the co-founder of Moms for Liberty and she is a Sarasota, Florida school board member. Interestingly enough, she also, I guess, had a threesome with another woman and her husband, which usually, you know, whatever, none of our business, except she's running around like shitting all over gay, lesbian, bisexual kind of people. And it seems, uh, seems like, well, maybe she had a little bit of, a little bit of that kind of fun herself, which again is fucking, otherwise let your freak flag fly, right? But shit.
To each their own, producer Dave, to each their own.
So they, um, after, after this and just like her overall sort of asshattery, otherwise the rest of the board, they can't vote her off, but they did essentially, I guess, like a no con, uh, no confidence vote in her would be the best way to describe it, where it's like non-binding, they can't kick her off, but they had voted that they, that it was their desire that she get the fuck out. And, um, one of the main, one of the reasons was that she had been, um, there's a gay man on the Sarasota school board and she had implied or just flat out said that he's, you know, groomer. Um, and he's clearly not, um, with all the moral panic, with all the moral panic going around, especially Florida being what it was. If he'd ever like looked at a kid the wrong way, right? We'd know about it. So dude is squeaky fucking clean.
In the census of Florida, no one escapes. Um, but yes, you, you miss, miss, what's her name again?
Ziegler.
Ziegler, you miss Ziegler. You are the, the groomer with your threesomes and your moms demand liberty. So what are we going to hear about from her today? Any idea?
Well, that's just sort of the backdrop here for basically for the podcast listeners, right? We just, cause, and what I don't usually do that I did for this one was I kind of scrubbed through the video to find out where the comments start. Usually if we like during public comment, cause we're here for fucking hours on public comment, sometimes till one, two in the morning. And so we don't do that. But this I scrubbed through and kind of found where the public comments start. So this is the public comment period. And, um, it would turn out that Sarasota being a city, uh, the people in the city, most of them don't like Ms. Ziegler and, um, they're generally on the right side of things. And, uh, but you do get a couple of potatoes in there. And so I haven't listened to any of this. And we're just gonna let it, we're just gonna let it go. I, you, you haven't been on in a, and like a, just kind of let it ride, uh, show in a while, but I think you, uh, I think you kind of know the format. You talk over it. And if I feel inclined, I'll stop the video. And if I don't, you'll, you'll step on the video anyway. So it doesn't matter.
You, I always do.
Well, what you'll, you, you know that you talk in the video ducks, so you'll, you'll, you'll be heard over the video. But, uh, yeah, we're just gonna kind of, kind of, we're just gonna riff on this and have some fun. People who are again, people who are listening to the podcast is a good reason for you to check out the live shows on Tuesday, or, uh, maybe, uh, join the Patreon or the eplex.store memberships, cause you get these zapped to your inbox in their entirety, the day after they come out, plus all of our other stuff. Plus you get to support, um, independent media. That sounds weird to say, whatever. I don't send you a tote bag, but you can probably buy a tote bag. I think there's a tote bag on my, on my swag shop. Anyway, here's from today, April 2nd, 2024, the Sarasota County School Board meeting, public comment.
On matters concerning our education system, your insights are vital to our educational decisions. As we proceed to this segment, I would like to outline some important expectations to ensure that an orderly and constructive meeting about the business of the board occurs. All speakers should have submitted a completed comment card before this segment.
Just let it, let it, let it hang, let it hang.
In the order received, each speaker will state their full name and shall confine their remarks to the business of the school board. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. A timer will signal when one minute remains. Please conclude promptly when the timer ends. Please address your comments to the board, not to the audience. We expect all remarks to be delivered in a manner consistent with school board policy. Abusive language, personal attacks, or disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. Please track any personal grievances or personal, personnel issues in writing to the school board office. Audience members are requested to listen quietly and respectfully. Outbursts, applause, or other interruptions that disrupt the meeting are not acceptable. Any person that interferes with the expeditious or orderly process of this meeting, after first being warned that such continued interference will result in removal, will be removed. We appreciate your cooperation. Let's begin with our first speaker, a school board, uh, member Enos will be announcing the names.
Uh, first up is Robin Williams, followed by.
Oh shit, Robin Williams?
Back from the great gig in the sky.
Did somebody in the, uh, audience clap when they heard the name Robin Williams? Cause they thought it was the, like the Robin Williams. I thought I heard that.
Either that or they were trolling madam president here by, you know, clapping and applauding and cheering before anyone's even spoken. That's just, uh, you know, disobeying the code of conduct.
So generally the people on the board are all right, except for Ziegler. Generally, cause we've watched this one a bunch of times. They're, I mean, they're not always, they're not always great, but they're all right.
They make sense. I mean, if it looks like what? Seven members and I'm guessing it's districted, right? So there's, she's probably from the most conservative rural backwards ass, you know, part of Sarasota County. And then the rest of them are from, you know.
Maybe like, maybe not necessarily rural. I'm not sure, but suburban.
Suburban, yeah. Suburban Sarasota is probably just as bad as, yeah, it's probably just as bad as rural Florida. And then, you know, six members from, you know, reality.
Welcome, Mrs. Williams.
Oh, Robin Williams flipping the script on us. Oh, she's got props.
Our workshops seem instructive regarding Ms. Rose and Ms. Ziegler's latest schemes. Ms. Rose seems worried about her unpopular reelection bid. Her solution? Limit public comment. That could be embarrassing to her. If Ms. Ziegler and Rose weren't always springing some new horror on the community, most of us wouldn't be here. In previous places I lived, it was a rarity for many residents to show up since elected officials didn't try to upset the apple cart. Rose's plan to limit public comment to 90 minutes, no matter how many speakers infringes upon our First Amendment rights. Concerns were also raised about signs blocking the audience's view. Really? Or could it be politically embarrassing for them to see lots of people with the same signs on national media? Who all agree that Ziegler should go, that they shouldn't have approved the crappy CS USA school?
Damn dude, she's fucking spitting fire.
LGBTQ plus community nor banned books. With manufactured culture war issues tanking and with DeSantis's failed presidential bid, the policy bankrupt Republican Party has one last gasp effort. Stroke fear of crime, which actually is down, and fear of immigrants. Two days after Trump's hitlarian remarks about opponents as vermin and immigrants as criminals, animals, and poisoning the blood, Ms. Ziegler, in her word salad way, which seems to be the clue she's anxious about introducing some really vile scheme, decided to pull the anti-immigrant card. Maybe she should familiarize herself with the longstanding Supreme Court decision, Plyler versus Doe, that all children, no matter their status, are entitled to the same opportunity to a public education as any other child.
Get him, Mima.
Was Ms. Ziegler doing this right after Trump's Hitler speech? Are the Ziegler's now trying to curry favor with Trump? Will Ziegler get her extremist friends to start coming here to complain about money spent educating vulnerable immigrant children? Regardless, the only thing the Republican Party seems to have going is drumming up fear and hate of vulnerable immigrants. Of course, they blocked a bipartisan immigration bill so that they could keep playing the immigration card.
Oh damn, she, damn, she, she must be fucking watching this channel or some shit, dude. Fuck.
She going there.
She's like shout out to Echo Plex Media at the end.
To speak out against xenophobia. Most faith traditions welcome the stranger. In Judaism, it's our most repeated commandment of the Torah, appearing 36 times. It's also found many times in Christianity and Islam. Had the US not passed the 1921 Anti-Immigrant Act, vastly reducing the number of people who could enter, many of my relatives wouldn't have been murdered by the Nazis. Don't call yourself religious if you don't welcome immigrants. Your religion instructs you to do so. You shall also love the stranger, for you are strangers in the land of Egypt. The alien who resides with you shall be to you as the citizen among you. You shall love the alien as yourself, for you are aliens in the land of Egypt. Cursed is anyone who withholds justice from the foreigner.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams.
For the widow.
Fuck yeah, Ms. Williams, Jesus Christ.
Drop the mic. Shout out to Echo Plex Media. Listen, tune into Down Ballot.
It's, uh, it's, yeah, I would have put her later in the lineup if I was like designing the party. Cause the like, it's going to be a little bit, you know, you don't want the, you don't want the opener playing a bunch of bangers, but, uh.
It's cool. It's all downhill from here. I mean, um, but yeah, she was dropping bombs all over the place. She's going after the, you know, federal government, local government, the people right in front of her, um, Nazis, just throwing it all into one big, um, soup. It was just beautiful. What a beautiful concoction you made there.
Joyce Peralta, followed by Lee Rubin.
Welcome.
Good evening. Tonight I present two issues for consideration, public comments and Sarasota school taxes. First, the idea of limiting public comments at school board meetings. We all wish school board meetings did not go on for five hours. The reason they do is that the current majority of the board does not listen to us. Every organization has a brand these days. The Sarasota school board brand is hypocrisy, also known as lying. When Ziegler, Enos and Marinelli were running for the board in 2022, their platform was transparency and listening to the taxpayers. Hypocrites or liars, you be the judge. There is a way to stop five hour school board meetings. Get your conservative Christian politics out of our schools. Better spend our school taxes. Speaking of Sarasota school taxes, I care about public schools for the good of the kids in my community, but also because good schools protect the value of my home investment. In 2022, when Sarasota taxpayers were asked to vote to approve additional taxes to keep our A rated schools, I gladly voted yes, as did a great majority. In 2024, I will be voting no, and I urge others to vote no as well. Why? The absolute waste of my tax dollars. First on removing a successful superintendent and wasteful redistricting. Those two issues wasted about $550,000. Karen Rose is responsible for bringing both of those to the forum. The approval of the classic Academy of Sarasota, a for-profit Christian school with the profits going to an individual, John Hague. When this school is filled, it will drain $15 million from the Sarasota school system taxes, my tax dollars and yours. The classical academy proposal is to spend $350,000 just on custodial help. Is that going to improve reading scores, Karen Rose? You know, the reason.
Oh, I don't know.
Kids learn better in a clean classroom. I'll tell you that much.
I have, I have some, uh, she's a mix. This, this one's a bit of a mixed bag, right? Because $350,000 on, on the, the staff that cleans the school, that's like a living wage for four people.
Yeah, it's solid. Um, I definitely agree with her that public dollars should not be going to prop up any sort of private institution. And that includes charter schools, by the way. Um, so I'm 100% with her on that one. But yeah, let's pay our, if we're gonna spend my tax dollars on a private school, I hope they are paying a living wage.
And like, not to be, not to be, not to get too deep into the weeds here, but that 350 isn't all salary, right? That's other costs that are involved in having the, uh, in people under your employ. Plus custodial staff, does that include the equipment like every year? Like.
Is that like a bucket of Mr. Clean too? Like what's, what's going on there?
Is that like for a, for, I don't know how many people are at this school, but that doesn't sound like that much fucking money, honestly.
I mean, in the greater scheme of things, I mean, the schools cost millions of dollars to run and meditation is absolutely a huge part of it. I mean, think about it. You've got hundreds and hundreds of kids running around, pooping, peeing, spitting, snorting.
Snot everywhere.
Snot everywhere, right? Like wiping their snot and everything, right? Like they just, they don't care. So yeah, I, that's a tough job. I wouldn't want to do it for anything less than a living wage.
Aired Superintendent Asflin, those reading scores? In Florida, parents can already send their kids to private and even Christian private schools and receive an $8,400 check in Sarasota. Now you want to also direct our school tax dollars directly to a private hedge fund? Are you kidding me? Oh yes, I forgot. Your brand is hypocrisy. Join me Sarasota taxpayers in void, voting no on additional school taxes until our tax dollars are spent wisely.
I mean, that's her, okay, you take out the part, the shitty part about the fucking, the hardworking, uh, staff at the school. She's cut, she's like, hey, you know, like if they're gonna give, you know, we were, you know, most of us are happy to vote for more money for the schools. If the money goes to the schools.
Yeah, a hundred percent. Like if she was sort of a same target, same result, uh, oriented, however, just different approach, different issues than the previous speaker. The previous speaker is very, looks like, you know, more of the progressive, um, uh, heartstrings, uh, appealing for, on, to the board on moral grounds, right? Whereas, uh, this is obviously a more conservative oriented woman who's more concerned with her, you know, her taxes, uh, which everyone should be. Her tax dollars being spent wisely. So, uh, different approach, but certainly the same goal, it sounds like getting rid of this Rose character, but, um.
Rose and Ziegler, Rose is the chair.
Bad apples.
So the reason, the reason they don't like, uh, Ziegler is because she's a Klan Karen hood, right? Like she's just straight up Moms for Liberty, like anti queer and.
Don't forget to follow us on social media.
Anti, um, you know, anti-black, anti-black history month, all that stuff. But this, uh, uh, the, the, the chair, uh, seems to be, uh, doing weird stuff with the money and funneling the money to private interests, which is a bad, both bad.
Yeah, it sounds as though, uh, from what I can deduce from just the two speakers, um, the school board, um, more than likely at the president's urging, approved, it sounds like it's charter or could be even a semi-private school that could be sanctioned within the district and they get some sort of public subsidy, um, for being within the district. When, uh, like they said already, that, that sounds like there's also a voucher program going on where, where public school parents can get money to send their kids to private schools. So I'm kind of, it's a little hazy on why this school existed in the beginning, or it has anything to do with the district to begin with. But it does sound like they're getting some sort of incentive. Um, and this lady is obviously not very excited about it. I wouldn't be excited about it either. And she probably looked up the board of directors and the investors in this, you know, school and more than likely there's a hedge fund or some other shady Peter Thiel kind of motherfuckers up in there as well. So she's not very happy about any of this and that's a good thing. Um, but yes, we should pay our generous living wage.
So it almost sounds like a double dip, right? Because they're, on one hand, the parents themselves are getting, um, a tax rebate if they, uh, maybe put their kids in this school and then the school is also getting money from the government. I know it's not like the same, and the same person, but there's two, then now there's a double incentive essentially. So it's like.
Yes.
It's a, it's a, uh, it's like a, it's like a kissing cousin to a double dip.
Right. I'm guessing it's one of those things like it's, uh, Rayleigh's words. You cannot be combined with other offers, right? So you can't, you couldn't use the, the voucher to go to the school that subsidized by the district already, right? But yeah, they're getting, they're definitely getting a double dip.
I bet, this is Florida, sir.
Well, yeah, I mean, you probably have lots of things, lots of ways to do things there.
I bet it's both.
Au contraire, mon councilman.
I mean, I don't know. I haven't, you know, like I said, we're, we're coming and we're not in Sarasota. I know I've watched a lot of these meetings and by that I mean maybe six of them over the, since we started doing public comment. But, um, I bet there's a double dip going on here.
I know this much, uh, privileged parents can get just about anything they want, especially out of a public school district. All they have to do is threaten to leave, threaten to go away, take their, their enrollment dollars somewhere else, right? Take those numbers somewhere else. Their kids are going to go somewhere else. They'll just be another part of the statistics of people moving out of the public school system. So if they have any privilege, if they have any wherewithal and means, right? If they're not, um, just desperate for the free public education that our schools provide, um, and they do have the means to, to move their kids. And they, yeah, they can leverage that and they can threaten and get what they want. Um, they want their kid to move to a different school. And sure, they want their kid to have, you know, certain amenities at, uh, you know, after school, sure. At their site, they'll get them because they, they will make a stink until their kid gets what they want, right? Or they will take their kid and run away. They'll take their marbles and go. And I dealt with that firsthand inside a school district, right? Parents get anything they want, including getting people fired, up to and including getting people fired firsthand experience.
Now you're in the private sector for a reason.
The private sector at least has rules. Um, and it's very, it's very clear when you fuck up, you know, it's very clear. Like this is what you did. Um, this is why we don't like that. This is what you said you would not do. You, you did it and this is what we said would happen, right? In public sector, it's sort of like your stat will, right? So any, any given moment, especially in administration, any given moment, you could be SOL.
And not, not to, not to, not to get too deep into it, but you were also, when you were working for the school district in a very public facing position. So you were the name attached to things that, that, that maybe had nothing to do with your, the actual work you were doing when you were in the office or whatever.
Correct. And also, um, was not unionized either. Administration was not, did not have union representation or a, a union contract, right? So, uh, as a teacher, you'd have recompense, you'd have a right to due process, all of these things. With me, I was able to have a buddy come in to a meeting with me with my superiors, just to make sure that what my superior said and what I said happened in the meeting were the same thing. Um, that, but that was, that was the only representation I got. I didn't have any contract that could defend me, or accused to defend myself, um, against the onslaught of, of rogue parents who, who had it in for, for me.
Well, they had it in for things that they were mad about. I mean, my understanding is they were mad about things that were happening in the school district and you just happened to be the face on TV, giving, well, giving the answers to the questions.
Oh no, those, those things actually were very easily, easy to navigate, right? Those, because that happened all the time. This is more of a personal vendetta that someone, um, used to, uh, to come at me, but because I was in a public space, yes. But anyway, that's, that's.
I shouldn't have done that to you. I shouldn't have done that to you. I'm sorry.
It's okay, man. I'm all right. I'm, I got over it. It's been a couple of years.
I was like, he's not spending enough time on the fucking podcast. We gotta take him out from the school district.
It's true. And this is like, yeah, this is, this is around that time too, right? Right before pandemic. But anyway, um, yeah, so I, I feel for both of these speakers, um, on both grounds. It sounds as though the, the board's going a little rogue, um, just led by, uh, Ms. Ziegler and, and the, this, the president here. But hopefully the other, I would think the other five members can vote them down and.
It's, it's. There's a, it's a, it's seven. It's a four, three on a lot of the shit, like a lot of the stuff that shit, it's four, three.
Because they sell, I mean, I guess they sell it well enough and it doesn't stink too much on its surface. And so.
Or, you know, who, the, you know, incentives being what they are, and with our limited knowledge of the, the people on the board and the politics of Sarasota County, like it's, you know, it kind of is what it is, you know?
We don't want to get recalled, right?
Yeah, that or. Yeah, it's fucking.
Or someone running against you.
Or in, mom, the ability to, the ability to peddle and wield influence, like who knows? Anyway, let's check out the next speaker.
Let's do it.
Lee Rubin.
They got three minutes, Jim.
Kristy Carwatt.
Good evening. I'm a substitute school teacher in our elementary schools. I want to share a brief story. I was substituting in a class not long ago. I think it was second or third grade. And I was helping put the books back in their bins. And a student teacher in the class told me that she had recently worked with the teacher to catalog 1,028 book titles in that classroom so that a list could be sent to every parent in the class so that they would know what the students were reading. Now, 1,028 books may sound ludicrous to you, but when you think about a second and third grader, the books are very short, they're thin. So it's highly conceivable that this teacher had to spend all her time on that exercise. Fortunately, the state has reversed its ban. And I urge the board to make that reversal clear to educators and parents alike. They need to know that these restrictions have been removed. They need to know that sanity has prevailed. They need to know that we are working on behalf of the students of Sarasota County. In closing, I want to thank the school board for greatly increasing the chances of a democratic victory in Sarasota this fall. Bridgette, Karen, Tim, Robin and Christian. Thank you for uniting us as never before. I'm excited to.
Excuse me, if the audience continues, I, we will take a break.
I'm excited to reelect Tom Edwards and to elect Liz Barker for the next school term. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I didn't barely hear the audience.
Right? They applauded.
Right.
Or laughed, they laughed. He was being, he was, it's hard done. I mean, it's hard not to laugh when spontaneously, when someone is being legitimately funny. And he was bang on.
Pretty good. Also probably, probably great substitute teacher. Seems like a nice guy.
Yeah, I think there, there should be someone playing like jazz drums behind him at all times, just. Cause he's just, he's just cracking wise. It's great.
Like, like he's the substitute teacher. When the kids start trying to fuck with him, he just starts fucking with the kids. And then like they get, they get down to like watching the fucking movie they have to watch, cause there's no teacher there today.
This is, this is one of those insidious things he's talking about here though, um, that, that comes out of these dumbass fucking policies where these fuckers are just. where these fuckers are just, you know, moms demand liberty, moms against liberty, honestly. They, you know, they want to ban books. They want to, they expose all the, the, you know, whatever the queer, um, you know, what do they call it? A grooming?
The grooming, probably CRT, um, just whatever communism, whatever, whatever the soup, whatever, whatever the dumbass soup de jour is, right?
Right. The word just keeps escaping me. I'm sorry, grooming, right? They want to uncover all that that's going on in the classroom. So they, you know, demand these inventories be taken of these, these books, right? And they don't, you know, they're just thinking, really, they're just thinking about like, oh yeah, they're going to find all these gnarly books that their kids are exposed to and they're going to want to ban them all, right? And this is just an exercise in like uncovering the, the evil dire, uh, you know, ploy to groom our kids in the classroom. And they're not thinking, or maybe they are, and this is kind of punitive of the time, just the time. Forget how ridiculous the policy is. Forget that we shouldn't be banning or burning books. Forget that, you know, our schools are not grooming our kids for anything other than to be good learners, right? And, and, and well-informed members of society so that they don't join groups like Moms Demand Liberty or whatever. Moms for Liberty, uh, they, the time it takes the teacher away from teaching their kids to do this, to do this catalog, right? That's the point the guy was making, right? Like they could be spending that time educating your kids, but no, you're going to pull them away from that. You're going to make them catalog all the books in their classroom because why? You're concerned about, you know, uh, some sort of weird narrative that in your head is being, uh, you know, instilled in our kids and your kids nefariously by schools and our public school system? Okay.
Well, and but these teachers are also salaried. So let's say the teacher doesn't want to take time away from their regular lesson plan and they want to do all their work, but then they have this to do. They're just going to do this at time that they would otherwise have time for themselves as a human being to have dinner with their spouse. Or if they're single, to go on a date or to hang out with their kids or to, you know, go see their mom or go to the park or smoke a big fat joint or whatever it is they want to do on their own fucking time, right? So now you're taking away this person, if, if they are like the debt, you know, a very dedicated teacher, the teacher's not going to stop doing their work to do this. They're going to do this in addition to their work. And since they're salaried employees, they're just basically going to do this for free.
Yeah. I mean, they're going to get it done. They're not going to get it done during class time, obviously, but they'll, they also more than likely won't do it outside of normal work hours. I mean, teachers have prep time. They have time, uh, before class, after class. They have in-service days, right? So there's time when they can get this done. But again, it's still valuable time that they need. It all, it's all in service to educating the kids.
You've got 30 kids, you've got 30 kids in the class that know how to write. How many books per kid is that? 30 books per kid. You'd be like, listen, kids, we're going to take the first hour today. We're going to do a little civics lesson here, grab the books and write them down.
Write the name of this book in this spreadsheet right here. I'm going to teach you about spreadsheets and Google docs, okay? Open up your, open up your tablets. We're going to go to Google docs and we're going to open up the spreadsheet. No, but seriously, they are going to take time in some way out of lesson planning or something else. They're not, they're, teachers are these, even the most dedicated teacher these days is not doing, especially shit like this, right? On their own time, they're going to, their own time is going to be their own time. It's just going to be less time. They're going to have the lesson plan, do other things. Teachers are different though. I mean, my mom would, you know, she'd be out the door before like there's any light in the sky, right? I wouldn't see my mom in the morning because she'd be off getting ready in her classroom for like three hours before the kid showed up because she needed that time and she'd stay until the fricking sun went down, right? And we were responsible for our own breakfast and our own dinner because mom was busy, right? But then there's other teachers who, you know, it is, it is, and it's on nine to five, but it is, there are boundaries, right? Um, and a lot of teachers this, these days, even the most dedicated ones are setting those boundaries with the help of their unions because they're just not getting, like you said, they're not getting paid to do this shit and they shouldn't have to do this shit. So these are the kind of things, the very kind of things that teachers would probably lobby against and just find anything they could do to, to pause or to delay or to not do it, or to find, you know, additional time or get extra pay to do it. Yeah. And if, and if they couldn't get any of those things, they would just slow walk it, right? Until, you know, they, they get it done, but they wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't be something like a top priority for them, right?
I also like, who's like, so you, you make this list. Are the parents going over the lists or are the parents just getting like, I don't know, they're, I guess somebody is, but it's not going to be the parents, right? It's going to be like politically motivated people, maybe even oftentimes from outside of the school district or who have nothing to do with any of this, who are going to be combing through these books like think tanks and, uh, fucking, uh, super packs and fucking these, these organizations like Moms for Liberty are going to be going through the books. And then, you know, I mean, maybe there's an English teacher somewhere going through the books looking for typos, but I don't think that's going on.
Or for inspiration, who knows, but, um, for, for their reading list. Yeah, no, but more than likely, I mean, it'll be, it would be a public list, right? So any parent, anyone from the community could, you know, peruse the list of books and some will, right? They'll just sort of look through it, but what will happen is Moms for Liberty, sorry, I keep thinking Moms.
Sure, sure. Klan Karen hood.
I, I, this is like, there you go. And there's been a Karen on the board. I love that. But, uh, they will co whatever they think are the top, you know, the top of the pops, right? The most insidious titles, the most inflammatory titles that they can find. And they will highlight them and send them out in their e-blasts and their mailers and their press releases. And they'll just highlight those whatever five books out of the 1,038 books in the classroom. And say, yeah, these, these are the real bad actors and point them out to everyone ad nauseam and all their supporters. And their supporters will eat it up and most of them will not read the full list, right? Because they'll say, oh, well, these guys already read the full list.
Or they won't even read a, a, a single word of the book that this organization is saying is bad.
Neither will the organization, right? That they're just, they'll find the titles that offend them or are going to inflame the most people and highlight them, right? Because at the end, really what they're going for here is none. And it's, I don't really think it's about banning specific books or specific ideologies. It's just all this shit that they're not really cool with and they want to, you know, they want to uncover and expose and embarrass the hell out of people for doing it and, and by doing so somehow end it, right? By, by incessantly calling it out and, 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 uh, they're not, they're not going to burn books. These people aren't going to go into a school courtyard and burn books because that would be a really bad look. And they're not going to ban them necessarily either. They're just going to make it really uncomfortable for people to, to, you know, do their job.
Right. It's about a broader political project that's probably not completely divorced from the fact that we're hearing about a private school that's being propped up by public money here. You know, might be a little bit of a crossover there on, uh, who's, uh, who's got their hands in, uh, what, what cookie jar, you know?
Well, it sounds like the same people supported that, that support the book ban too, right? So, um, what's, what's going on here? Anyway, let's, let's hear a more.
We'll, we'll say two and a half for three on the commenters.
Yeah, I think so.
Maybe two and two and two thirds.
I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's someone who supports these guys.
Oh, yeah. Interruption. Please be respectful when we have speakers.
Chris.
Yay.
And Maya Mitchell.
Good evening. My name is Kristi Carwatt. I'm a former parent and a former teacher in Sarasota County.
Are you not a parent anymore?
What I'm going to say is, I just want to say how proud I am of that Sarasota High School basketball team. I had three of those kids in class last year. Not only are they stellar athletes, they're stellar students, they're hardworking. And when I saw them, I thought I was going to cry because they're just.
A former parent, I bet she means like her kids aren't in this school anymore and she just said it wrong, right? Probably just kind of misspoke.
A hundred percent. Yeah, no, I was just, I was just cracking wise, but, um, it's, it's lovely that she has such lovely things to say about the black kids that she taught that are now playing basketball.
Oh my God.
That's what we're here for, students, the students. So what I'm here to talk about today is a couple of things. First, I watched the workshop on March 19th and during that workshop, Mrs. Ziegler, you asked about tracking the status of immigrant students. I was somewhat surprised that you would ask such a question because you've been on the school board for such a long time.
Three and a half for three, three and a half for four.
This is the, do you know how to do your job question? This is my favorite form of my favorite kind of question. What is your job again? What do you do for your job?
The answer to that question, or at least you could have Googled it and got it quickly. So I brought you a fact sheet put out by the US Department of Justice and the US Department of Education, which answers your question. In short, school personnel cannot ask for child's citizenship or immigration status. This has been the policy for as long as I have been part of the school district. Mrs. Ziegler, did you really want to know the answer to that question? Or was it just another one of your political moves? Perhaps you were trying to regain the support of those who moved away from you after they learned of your extracurricular activities. By once again, using innocent children to fire up your base. Second, I want to speak about the board's consideration to limit the time citizens are given to address the board. I know meetings are very long, but have you considered the reason why? I will tell you why. Seems like you should already know the answer, but I'll tell you. Many in this community are unhappy with the board's decisions, at least four on the board. If you want shorter meetings, you should consider the concerns of the public and vote accordingly. Many community speakers spend hours researching the issues at hand and provide valuable information which you don't even consider before casting your votes. I will end with a quote I meant to say the last time I spoke. It's from greatschools.org. I'm sharing this because it is apparent by the votes of some members on this board, they aren't putting public education first. Great school board members advocate at the local, state and national level for public education. They take advantage of opportunities to communicate the needs of public schools to other levels of government and advocate for strong public schools. How about this board start doing that? How about this board start fighting for public education, even if those at the state level are not going to do so? After all, that is what you were elected to do. You weren't elected to support private schools through vouchers or private companies for, through for, for profit charter schools. Do your job. Thank you.
Do your job.
Hell yeah.
That was great. Three and a half for four.
At the last meeting, you asked a question to which I already knew the answer, but I brought you some information. She just had two pieces of paper. She's like, here's, here's the, here's the answer. It's very short, actually. And yes, even if you're, even if you're like an immigration hardliner, like, like I don't, I couldn't imagine like an argument even from like an immigration hardliner, that it's, uh, that the school is a good place to like, address the immigration status of like a nine-year-old, right? Like.
No, not at all. And in fact, it's standard practice. Most school districts do not ask that information. They don't have to, they're not required to, uh, for enrollment or anything like that. They don't track the information. In California, it's in, especially here in the Bay area, it's a standard practice primarily because they don't want to have the information because it could get subpoenaed by, you know, ICE or other, you know, agencies. And they don't want to have it. They don't want to share that information. They don't want to give, you know, they want to dox their own kids, right? And, 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 and make them, uh, vulnerable to deportation or anything else, right? So, uh, yeah, that they don't ask that information. They don't tell that information, right? It's, it's, that's pretty much how it is. But apparently that, that's not enough for, for Ms. Ziegler. She, she wants to know. But she wants to get any data about the, the money that goes, it's funny that she wants to get any data that about money that goes to immigrant children. It really is, everyone at this point, we're all fucking immigrants, you know, especially in a place like Sarasota. I can't imagine what the immigrant population is there, but it's probably a lot. And then this, the public school system is here for everyone, here for all residents. It doesn't matter. Your immigration status does not matter. You don't have to have, uh, all the things. You just have to have a kid who needs an education living here and that's it.
All right, let's see who's next.
Maya Mitchell and then Peggy Mormon.
Peggy Mormon, oh God.
Welcome, Maya Mitchell.
Very illiterate.
I want to inspire you. I want to inspire you to fight, to preserve democracy from those in the nation attempting to constitutionalize hate. I want you to say gay and I want you, I want to inspire the inclusion of gay culture in our current curriculum.
That cop had to leave because he wouldn't say gay.
Anthem, it says, oh, say, does that star spangled banner yet wave or the land of the free? Freedom of expression and therefore democracy itself is under assault. With don't say gay, we are truly violating the most basic concepts regarding our nation's governmental makeup. Freedom requires that diverse populations be as free as any other demographic, to be learned about, studied, understood and accepted. By turning diversity and inclusion into negative conceptualities, we are causing the true death of freedom and in turn, the death of true democracy. Freedom is being defined, defied to the detriment of the LGBTQ population in the United States. Books referencing the LGBTQ plus community are still banned from being used to teach. Let's put gay back into the instructional material where it belongs. Let's teach about sexual orientation and gender identity. Daily harm to students' psyches is occurring as children are taught to repress an essential piece of their self-concept. Members of the LGBTQ community are already being challenged and bullied without the state backing their marginalization. The United States Declaration of Independent States, behold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal and they are endowed by their creator with certain unalienable rights. Among these should be the right to say who you are, what you represent and be educated regarding your own history. President Barack Obama stated in his second inaugural address, "Our journey is not complete until our gay brothers and sisters are treated like anyone else under the law. If we can say straight, then we should be able to say gay. Stand up and say gay, break the distortions, destroy the stigmatizations and say gay. History has shown that like most groups seeking freedom from repression, sooner or later, we will win. Let's make our government democratic again."
Thank you.
She was clearly like nervous to speak too, so good for her.
Very much so. Yeah, I was, I mean, can't say, the energy was really there to inspire, but the words were very inspiring. And she was definitely all in point with all of her comments, but good on her. It's, it's tough to get up in front of people and speak, no matter where it is, Sarasota County School Board or, you know, in front of Congress. It's, it's challenging. That's Joe Biden.
Peggy Mormon and then Louise Machinist.
Oh, getting up to leave. Rose Maudy.
Hello, I'm Peggy Mormon.
Hey Peggy. I think she's with us.
Couple of months ago, I brought each of you a book on reading methodologies, which, could you raise your hand if you looked at it?
No.
Just curious.
They're not required to respond.
Since you're not curious, please pass your copy along or you read it over the summer when you have more time, I'm sure. You notice I didn't ask if you'd read it. I asked if you'd looked at it.
Right.
So if you want to limit public discussion, the first thing you should do is demand that Bridgette Ziegler leave. She's a millstone around your necks. Yes, because of her hypocrisy, but also because of the harm she's already caused the LGBTQ community. If she'd done the right thing and left after you supposedly expelled her from this board, you wouldn't be suffering through all these time-consuming public comments. And only you could have made that happen, but are you suffering? Are you even listening really? It's not all about Bridgette. A lot of it is about the money that you've been wasting. As people have made abundantly clear using statistics that I don't have at my fingertips and I greatly appreciate those who do. There was a good deal of informed, detailed, respectful public commentary here about the financial and educational risks of approving a for-profit company to run a conservative magnet school. But your vote to approve it looked pretty pro forma to me. It looked pretty thoughtless. If you had been really listening or even interested, the commentary from the people here would have at least given you pause. I didn't see that pause. There was an excellent chance that you could have prevailed over the supposed mandate from Tallahassee, but from the look of things, you barely considered it. I've really tried my best to speak respectfully here, but month after month, you lose our respect. You lose it by wasting tax dollars, tolerating grotesque hypocrisy, including your own. You're not reflecting on your responsibility for this time-consuming protest. We're happy to have been brought together, but to blame us for being here would really be beyond the pale. You're really not listening and Sarasota schools and taxpayers are going to pay for your inattention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Louise Machinist. And then Lou Grossman.
Yeah, she was, I think she, she's either the, a nice granny that who really knows what she's doing or she was, she used to be a teacher or something. Because the way she was talking to people, that was like, that was like the teacher scolding the classroom, but being nice about it, right?
Right. You didn't do the assignment. You didn't even bother to just look at it. You didn't read, no, you didn't read the chapter. You didn't even open the book, period. So I'm very disappointed. I'm very disappointed. You could do so much better. Yeah, they had that, that's, that lovely teacher tone, that scolding tone, but you know, disappointed and just sort of trying to imply that, you know, because they have failed, their entire future is at risk, right? But in the gentlest of tones.
Louise Machinist.
Hi everybody, back again. About the public comments, I want to say I agree with you. It is terrible, demoralizing and a time waster, listening to community members hour after hour, meeting after meeting, year after year, when there's so much work that needs to be done, making an ever better public education system. But as others have already said, the proposed shortening of public comment really misses the point. And the real point is make real change. As a board, stop creating the breathtakingly outrageous problems that everyone has been detailing here. Stop. Stop foisting these horrible problems on the education concerned community. Change course. Support a quality secular public education system that the taxpayers pay for. Respect the cares and care for the needs of all the kids, support the teachers, remove the right wing extremist politics. Stop wasting the tax money, stop embarrassing the community and Ms. Ziegler, step down and let us elect your successor in August. And then we won't be compelled to be here time and time again. So I want to say to two of the board members, you really won't probably remember these conversations, but during your campaigns for school board in 2022, when ultra MAGA was actively disrupting these meetings, I asked Mrs. Marnelli what she would do to stop the circus. She didn't give me an answer. I also asked Mr. Enos at one of your presentations about school safety, we had a conversation. You said that frustrated people should be given the opportunity to express themselves, that the people just need to be heard. Yes, we do. And I heard Mrs. Rose at the hollow telling the crowd that she and pretty much she alone will always have the parents backs. I will always support you, she said. Well, the parents are here now and the teachers, the students, the taxpayers who care. We are Sarasota citizens, not outside groups. We actually are the moderate middle. So listen to us, let us speak and change the course of your board.
Yeah, this is, this is pretty good. One of the things that I, we noticed sometimes is we'll just come across like a random school board, right? And, um, nothing happens. Like it's bad for, um, the public comment show, but, uh, it's, uh, functional. Like we, I was looking through stuff and I just went in a school board meeting, like wasn't today, it was yesterday. I saw one that was 35 minutes.
The whole meeting.
The whole meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's honestly fairly commonplace and it was before, especially, especially pre pandemic, pre MAGA, pre Trump. School board meetings were very pro forma. And like the previous speaker or one of the earlier speakers said, you know, if you're tired of public comment and all these people coming in to speak, don't do stupid shit, right? But that's, but that was sort of the way it was. Why, like I said, but I hate to keep going back to it, but when I was there back in, back in my day, when I was at a school district, you know, the, the administration and staff, like they hated school board nights. They, they despise these nights because it would mean they would have to, you know, stay late and stay until six when the meeting started. And, and they might have to make a presentation or answer questions from the board about their, you know, subject area or their department. So they hated sticking around and waiting around, you know, not getting to go home with their families or eat or do whatever, you know, get their own personal time, right? It was a chunk of their private time that was taken up by this meeting. So yeah, they wanted these meetings to be short and sweet and done and no comment. And suddenly they started getting very political and the meetings started getting longer and the public comments started going on longer. And yeah, the administration would just get more and more frustrated with being there. And it became this, this very spicy environment where no one wanted to be there except for the people that were there to complain. So it, you end up getting just like that, right? Like longer and longer meetings, whereas, you know, they, yeah, they could have a fucking 10 minute meeting, really. There, there really wasn't a whole lot that the school boards actually do when it comes down to it. It's, it's almost all just approving and rubber stamping things that the administration is doing because these school board members don't know shit about education or what it's like in the classroom. Most of them aren't teachers, most of them have never served in a classroom, served in a, in a school district, worked in schools. They just know what they think from their perspective as a parent more than likely, right? Or a taxpayer. So they don't know, so they don't actually, at the end of the day, they try to make a lot of waves or do a lot of things because they don't know how and they don't know where to pull or what to do. So they get walked over, right? So really the only reason they are long now is because these guys are, when they start to do shit and start to meddle, right? And they don't know what they're doing, so they're gonna fuck up no matter if they're good intentioned or not. And these folks are obviously malintentioned and they're hearing.
So it wasn't a school board meeting, but when I lived in Campbell, I remember we all, a bunch of us showed up to a city council meeting because the city for reasons unknown were actually denying a permit to somebody we knew who wanted to open a restaurant. And the permit, he didn't want to have like a band or a party. He wanted his restaurant to be open till 11:00. And that was the, and then I, you know, I went to that and there were kind of a lot of people there. And one of the people, if you could imagine this on the city council was like, hey, I've actually kind of, uh, listen all y'all. And I kind of changed my mind here actually, because they're, they're, you know, he's like, you know, I didn't even think about this, but there's other stuff on, on the avenue that's open, you know, till two in the morning. So if they can make money and they can staff their place and serve food and alcohol till, yeah, then, then it flipped. Because they, the people, you know, the, everybody was like, just totally like, hey, what, what's going on here? Like the, you know, the build, the, the address right next door is open till two in the morning. We're not, we're not bothering any, you know, we're not going to bother anybody. The guy's restaurant ended up not working out or whatever. But, you know, and then I went to another one. Like, I was like, oh, that was, you know, interesting to see how the sausage gets made here. And then I went to the next, uh, city council meeting and I was like, this is boring. They just approved everything. And then I went to the next one, I was like, well, this is boring, they just approved everything. And I stopped going because I was like, oh, they're just approving everything, whatever.
Right. And okay, I mean, that it really, local government is potholes, public safety, parks, you know, permits. It's, it is the boring shit, right? It, for the most part, it's land use, it's things like that, right? Where, but it's the stuff that impacts your day to day life immediately and in a very large and substantial way, right? The federal government and all this stuff we worry about with Trump and with, uh, the federal shutdown and all these things and, and federal government policy. Really, when it comes down to it, like even Roe versus Wade, right? Like for the Supreme Court overturned it, right? Went back to the states. Well, yeah, the states are actually, you know, exercising their rights and figuring out a way to do it. Now we actually are having more abortions, unfortunately, um, on a monthly basis than we were before the ban. But it's really local government that has the most impact, right? And we forget about that, I think, and we, we sort of just let, you know, let it go. Even our elected officials kind of let it go. They just, you know, just, just perpetuate the, the process. They come in all firebrand, like I'm going to change things, I'm going to tear it all up and I'm going to tear it all down and start it over from scratch and respect the taxpayers' dollars and all these things, when they realize that public servants, for the most part, right? There's corruption, San Francisco, I'm looking at you. There's corruption everywhere, right? And there's graft everywhere. But it's not as bad as here, as in other countries and other places, especially in the Bay area. And public servants generally are working hard. They're working their asses off for very little pay, um, for the promise of a pension one day, um, because they care. And they're trying to do a good job and they're trying to spend your tax dollars wisely and they're trying to educate your kids well. And if, if they're not, it's not for lack of trying, they could try different things and they should try different things. But they're not the enemy, right? And unfortunately, that's what the, the MAGA contingent, that's what any of these, uh, sort of insurgent groups in school boards and any other elected bodies are, uh, think is that they, you know, they know better than them. And, uh, these folks are greedy bastards, these teachers are greedy bastards who, you know, are wasting my tax dollars and not educating my kids. When really they're trying to do their best. It's the school boards that fuck everything up. And if the school boards were better people, they could do more things and better things, right? But instead you get boards like this where they just react and they want to do the, the bad thing.
Well, and not for nothing, we've watched, you know, uh, I guess Christian nationalist events. The one that comes to mind is this Reawaken America tour with people like Michael Flynn and Lee Dundas. And they're telling everybody to show up at the school boards and run for school board. Cause it's like sort of the soft underbelly of, of our, of our, you know, I guess liberal, lowercase liberal democracy is going to be like school boards where, you know, all you gotta do is fucking go out there, collect some signatures and then say the, you know, appeal to people's fear and bam, now you're on the school board because like not a lot of people vote, not a lot of people care. And they might just pick whoever's like on first on the fucking ballot or like, and so it's, it's like, it's like a lot easier to like, kind of, uh, make, uh, what I would call bad trouble, like on the local level.
Yeah, and I mean, a lot of times the, the, these races don't even, and this is shout out to anyone who's thinking of running for something who's got good values. A lot of these races don't even end up on the ballot, uh, because you don't end up with enough candidates for the seats that are open. So they just elect them, they don't bother spending the money to have an election, they just, you're elected, you, you win. Or someone is running for reelection unopposed, right? And so, you know, because no one steps up to file and spend the money to file the filing fee and pay for a campaign and do all the things. Because you have a lot of people out there who are concerned and talk a lot, but at the end of the day, running for office is hard. It's, it's, it's some work, right? It's, it's not easy. But it's a lot easier in races like this, like you're saying, where it's the under, soft underbelly where people aren't as aware of what's going on, right? So you can come in with, uh, your hair on fire and have an agenda and get noticed. Whereas the person who maybe who already has the job has never been noticed. Like who is this person? I don't know who this school board member is. I didn't know we had a school board, right? Because they, but most folks don't, seriously, I knocked, I knocked so many doors for myself and for other people running for school board. And most parent, parents even, parents who have kids in the schools in that district don't realize that there is an elected governing body for their board, like they can elect the people that represent them. And so therefore, you know, the lowest common denominator usually gets elected, some parent with a bug up their butt or some community member with a bug up their butt, or someone who just likes having honorable in front of their name and going to parties and being invited to events. They are the ones that get elected. And the MAGA people and the right wing saw an opportunity that we call it a market inefficiency, right? They saw an opening and they have taken it. And now we're scrambling on our side. You know, the local Democratic Party here in Santa Clara County is scrambling now every couple of years to just find candidates to run so that these fuckers don't get just elected because they're the only ones that filed to run. Because they only had the balls to do it, right? Or, or the money or the time, right? So, um, yeah, it's, it's, it's very much so a weakness in our system. And once they get on school board, then they have a platform that they can use to run for city council or county supervisor or state. You know, these, it starts here, it starts right here. And, uh, we need to take, take this much more serious, the threat much more seriously and have a pipeline of good people who can run and can afford to run and can take the time to run, um, to, to fend these folks off. Because if you stop them here, they're done, right? They're not going to get any air that you suffocate them at the, at the, at the ground level, you tear the weed out at the root, right? But that's, you know, if it doesn't happen, then it festers and it grows. And what happens with the weed, right? It goes everywhere, right? So.
So there seems to be like a pattern too, where they had mentioned, somebody had mentioned that there were like, like Proud Boys or like kind of far right extremists showing up at the meeting. So it seems like that's like the, what happens before they start running people is a bunch of fucking crazies come to the, come to the board and like rile people up. And then they get their candidate out there after they've riled up, uh, people with their, you know, because they'll put the stuff on social media or whatever. And low, look what I just stuck it to this school board. And wouldn't you like it if this candidate I'm supporting can go stick it to the school board from the dais or whatever?
Yeah. Yeah, uh, it certainly starts there. And frankly, you know, especially places like where we live, right? Where it is more of a blue, you know, shades of blue, right? In any community, um, they don't have a lot of air and oxygen to begin with. So what you end up seeing is in most cases is a lot of noise without a lot of backup, right? Like you don't actually see these people drop up to run. They have run in some districts here locally. But in this, in an area like this, you just don't, they don't, they don't make that transition from talk to action, right? They'll just, they're happy to complain and complain and complain. But when someone actually says, well, you should run, you could run and, and oust this person, they'd rather just circulate a recall petition, right? They don't, these are the folks that don't want to run, they don't want to actually run a legitimate campaign because they know they wouldn't win. They want to run a recall campaign or some sort of special election or special circumstance to get what they want. And it's smart, politically, it's smart. They know what they're, you know, they're not dumb. They're being, they're being propped up by people who know what they're doing. And, um, it's, it's efficient and it works, it looks like it works in Sarasota and it works in other communities that aren't as progressive and dyed in the wool blue as, as our community. And it's with a lot more, a lot higher rate. So it's certainly something to be concerned about and we should, but we shouldn't rest on our laurels. Like even though I'm, despite what I'm saying, there's still a huge threat here and we need to be on the lookout. Every locale needs to be on the lookout.
All right, let's move on to the next speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Grossman by Leila Newcomb.
Welcome, Lou Grossman.
And that's a public name.
Thank you, members of the school board for allowing me to speak.
At least truth matters.
I'm a huge fan of the First Amendment. I've always had.
Me too.
I worked at a local government outside Philadelphia. My first job was a little bit over 20 years ago. And we had an agreement between Republicans and Democrats, between conservatives and liberals, that every citizen that wanted to speak would speak, they would not be limited. And sometimes this went on for hours. It was necessary, it was the First Amendment, it was necessary. We had a conservative, we have, we had a gentleman who is now a conservative, uh, radio commentator, I'm sure you know him, Mark Levin. Mark Levin used to speak for an hour at our, at our, at our meetings. He was a filibuster, we allowed it, okay? You need to let these students speak, you need to let parents speak, you need to let the citizens speak unlimited. You need to allow this, you, you cannot cut off speech. First speeches are right and first speeches is what you should be doing. So I beg you, please not to limit speech and I beg you to do the right thing, not the right wing thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fair enough. Zig. And then Sandra.
Who the fuck lets fucking Mark Levin blather on for an hour at their fucking public comment in their government meeting? I gotta get recordings of that. Is that his origin story? That's amazing.
Welcome, Mrs. Newcomb.
Thank you.
She's got preparation.
So Leila Newcomb, exhausted grandmother of three in Sarasota Public Schools. I come here tonight as always to fight for the world that my grandchildren are about to inherit. As of a few weeks ago, one of my grandchildren can now vote and so can many of her friends. And luckily they have received their education prior to the attempts to dumb things down. And I can guarantee you that none of them buy the illogical nonsense going around lately. And they recognize out of context pseudo arguments. They're also very tuned into hypocrisy and they have no trouble saying so, trust me. I understand there's been some discussion about cutting down public comment time and that's understandable, I guess. But my solution, like everybody else has said, it would be for you folks to quit the distractions. One after another, since this board took office, I'm not going to list them, everybody else already did that. But, um, now I hear you want to bring untrained chaplains into our public schools. Then you want to blame the public for taking up your time to address these things. Does anyone see how backward this is? And what a waste of everybody's time and our children's time. The only person up there who I have seen doing anything innovative or even constructive is Mr. Edwards, who among other things has successfully instituted several academies in the high schools toward the goal of having every student graduate employed, enrolled or enlisted. It's great. Otherwise, what I'm seeing is support for the marginalizing of certain segments of our population and for the whitewashing of American history.
I like her.
And now I hear the subject of.
I like this sweater.
Is being brought up.
I bet one of her grandkids made it.
And if they're here, they're here.
More likely.
And not only do they deserve an education, but I think it's in our best interest that they get one. So I want to leave you with this. My grandchildren have already experienced friendships across the board and none of them like hearing about the marginalizing. Now, this is a little treat for everybody from my granddaughter's middle school advanced science class, aren't they cute? And not one of them cares about skin color or country of origin. Not one of them, trust me. Thank you very much.
That was a nice message, me ma, but I, I bet the brown ones are, maybe they don't care so much about it, but they may be, they're probably acutely aware of it based on everything that's going on in fucking Sarasota right now.
A hundred percent. If they haven't already, they're about to be, you know, given a conversation with their parents about what it means to be, um, even remotely black, right? Like if you're not stark white, right? If you're even, if you, one, one billionth black, right? You are black in our, in our society, that's how it is. Barack Obama made that abundantly clear. But yeah, the, the brown, black and brown kids have either had the conversation with their parents or, or going to, or, like you said, acutely aware already that there is something going on here that they are being treated differently than the other kids. Absolutely. If you, and they may not get it, they may not know why, right? And they may be like, whatever, I'm still friends with that guy over there, that white kid or that brown kid or that, you know, whatever kid. And, and it doesn't really impact their day to day, but they say, you're right, kids are fucking so smart. They sense something's going on, they sense something's wrong, right? They just can't put their finger on it, they can't articulate it, just like my toddler right now, right? She's hungry. She can't tell me what she wants to eat, right? She can point, I want that, I want that, I want that, but she can't actually tell me. She just knows she's really hungry and she wants something. And that's sort of, that's where, that's how kids are, right? Like they can. Like they can, they can suss it out, they know something's up, just like we know something's up. But they can't, can't tell you exactly what it is.
Well, let's see what, let's see who's next. We have watched these and we have seen potatoes on this before, so.
Nice, I'm hoping, I'm hoping for a potato. We've so far six, six and a half out of seven.
Welcome, Sandra Jimenez.
So I guess I have to say my name. So I come before you today absolutely repulsed regarding a matter involving this, the board member Bridget Ziegler that had been plaguing our community and our school board for over six months.
She's upset about the threesome.
Situation that speaks to the importance of integrity, fairness, and compassion. Yet it is one that has been allowed to fester and escalate without resolution by our school board. As members of this school board, you must address the ongoing harassment and mistreatment of one of your own colleagues. Bridget has been subjected to relentless attacks and defamation stemming from a deeply personal matter.
Oh, no.
Regrettable should not define her character.
Why is the threesome regrettable?
Seriously, it's probably good, fun at the time.
Repulsing is the school.
Did she get off, I mean?
Ms. Ms. Rhodes legally ineffective, uh, she legally ineffective resolution, which the rest of the board voted for demanding her resignation was.
How's that illegal?
More than a publicity.
So it's, she's calling it illegal when it's just not binding. Like I said before, it was like, almost like a no, like a no confidence.
Right, censure, yeah, right.
Where it's just like.
You did a bad thing. No, no, no.
I, you know, I think it's best that these boards are structured in such a way where you, if you piss off the other members of the board, they can't just vote you off next week.
Oh, absolutely. Can you imagine? Like that's, that's exactly why censure and things like non-binding resolutions like that exist in the first place. Because they realized that a board shouldn't have the, I mean, I'm amazed that Congress can kick, you know, George Santos, that whole thing. I'm amazed that Congress can kick someone out, right? Like that's impressive.
That's, that's, you know, there's a lot more of them, right? It's, you know what I mean? Like, so it's, I could see that because there's just a lot more of them. Where in this case, you just have to piss off six people.
Or four, right?
Right. Oh, I would, I would assume that, you know, if it's a board of seven, it would have to be unanimous.
Not necessarily, no. Censures, censures are.
Well, I don't mean censure, I mean if they had the power to kick someone off, I would assume it would have to be a hundred percent of the other members of it.
One would think, but you have to look, they can look at the bylaws. I mean, if they have that power, um, it could just be simple majority. But it really depends on the agency and their bylaws. But anyway, let's listen to what the apology has to say.
Also, I would just vote no, because what if I'm next?
That added fuel to the fire of an already volatile situation. Despite repeated pleas for intervention and protection, the rest of our board members have now chosen to turn a blind eye, allowing the harassment to continue unchecked. This is not only a failure of leadership, but also it's a betrayal of the trust placed in all of you by your constituents and a violation of the principles of decency and respect. Let me be very clear, harassment and bullying have no place in our community or on our school board. Regardless of one's personal beliefs or opinions, every individual deserves to be treated with dignity, compassion, and fairness.
Have all the threesomes.
To uphold the values of inclusivity and equity while allowing such behavior to go unchallenged.
Ooh, the paradox of tolerance. Oh, you're doing the paradox of tolerance. Well, how much, how many intolerant people can we accept? No, it's like the Nazi bar problem, right? Like it's all that the bartender lets a Nazi in, the next time he brings his friend and he's like, well, I let the one guy in. You know, we'll let the other guy in. And now fucking three weeks later, all that, your bar is Nazis. It's like.
And suddenly you have a Nazi bar.
Right, yeah. It's like, you know, like this, this is, the, the tolerance is actually, um, more complicated than, than, like the way we think about tolerance, like as a socially constructed thing is like way more complicated than just, oh, well, everyone's, everyone should just be okay. It's like, well, no.
Right.
And like the other thing that I, I'm like, when she says harassment, does she think that them voting like a no confidence vote was harassment? Which do you think she would file that? Cause that's just, you're a member of the school board, you're going to be subject to pub, public scrutiny.
Yeah, I think the harassment she's talking about is the, the commentators who've came before her, right? And, and their legitimate concerns.
Like you bought the, like, I, I, you agree with me, but I'm just like, if you buy the ticket, you take, you buy the ticket, you gotta take the ride. You can get off the ride whenever you want, but you're not, you don't get to be the school board member and be like a high profile person in the state of Florida now nationally. And then expect everybody to just be like, oh, uh, just whatever. No, that's not, not how this works.
You're a public official now, you, you, you represent the community, right? Like your votes represent the community, you have been elected in a public process, right? You, you are the community. You are, you're not just representative, you are the community. So yes, you belong to, you don't, you know, you're not their slave, but hey, Florida, but you belong to the community, right? In that way, you, you are definitely, you are certainly, um, there's a binding covenant that you have enacted by running for office and winning and be serving in this role, right? No matter what role it is, dog catcher or congress member, right? There is a public trust that's been placed in you and you are now a public figure and you are open to the public scrutiny because thousands of people have said they want you to represent them. And if you're not representing them well, they have every right to come at you and say, you're not representing me well. And I want better representation, um, whether it's in public comment. And God forbid, you know, recall or censure or anything else like that, right? But they should be happy that they're just facing these folks in public comment and they're talking about how they're gonna, you know, run people against them and, and embrace democracy in the next election. It could be worse, right?
And not for nothing, we're not just talking about some random person from Sarasota who ran for off, who ran for this office one and has politics people don't like. She is a national figure, the co-founder of Moms for Liberty. She is a, she is a political force, like on the national stage in some ways.
And she did that to herself, right? She put, it sounded like she didn't shy, oh, I can't believe that my little thing that I started, you know, became a national thing. No, she.
I, I fell into a pool of Moms for Liberty by accident, right?
I tripped and fell into a cult, um, into leading a cult. No, but seriously, uh, I'm sorry, I'm sure it's not a cult, but, uh, that, yeah, that, that's the case. She, she's absolutely a public figure, this, this well-into, lovely little lady is defending someone who has put themselves out there for criticism and has opened themselves up for criticism. And it's not just because she had a threesome.
Right, right. It's the, in fact, I think that's the coolest thing about her.
Right, like I would actually, that, that, that was, that made me, you know, with one thing that made me warm and fuzzy about her in the first place.
It is incumbent upon each one of us to stand up against injustice and intolerance, to speak out against harassment in all its forms. And to hold ourselves and each other accountable for creating a safe and supportive environment for our community.
True.
To our school board members, I implore you to put aside personal biases and political agendas and to finally do what is right. It is your duty to protect the well-being and dignity of your colleagues and to ensure that they carry out their responsibilities without fear of reprisal or harassment. Anything less is a failure of your moral and ethical obligation as leaders. To Bridget, who has been subjected to this unjust treatment, please know that you are not alone. You have the support and solidarity of your community and all those who stand for decency and justice.
Thank you, Mrs. Jimenez.
Harassment is ended and justice is served.
Julie London.
They should just do like Shasta does now, where they cut the mic at three minutes. Shasta's great, the mic is doing it too.
Remember on the, 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 the one, uh, meeting we got kicked off YouTube for where they just cut the mics?
So sad, yeah, San Jose's doing it now too, as a matter of standard practice, they just cut it off at the end of your time.
That's the only way to do it. It's the only, it's like electronically do it, you know? The only way to do it.
Well, the best is you heard the tiny little voice echoing throughout the room like. But because they keep talking and they don't, either don't realize that they don't give a shit that they turned their mic off.
We'll call that the echo of shame.
The echo of shame.
Hammer. First, I want to thank Mr. Dugan for his quote at the March 19th workshop regarding limiting time for public comments. He said, "All should have a meaningful opportunity to participate before voting takes place. It can't be done in one minute." When one has board members who say, "I have been out in the community and they told me," I want to remind them that we are the community and judging by the number of times we get buzzed, three minutes isn't even enough time. I do agree with Mr. Edwards and Mr. Enos, do the agenda public comments first before the votes and then after the voting, why Bridget Ziegler needs to go. Regarding workforce housing, something is going to have to give with Nail Communities, who has been a huge donor to Bridget's political campaigns. I know with the Sarasota Housing Authority, board members have to disclose any contributions or involvement and then sustain from voting. City Commissioner Arroyo is in trouble for not disclosing his involvement with Ken Thompson Park and it's all over the place. The optics of Ziegler and Nail goes beyond the pale. So while she should be allowed to participate during these meetings morally and legally, I believe she can't vote. I was uncertain about what workforce housing would look like, so kudos to Superintendent Connors, who is working on surveys for teachers. With Florida being 47th in the nation in teacher salaries, Sarasota could offset that with daycare and all that a Vengroff property could offer. They are known for giving a hand up, not a handout, although teachers anywhere should not need low income housing. That's shameful. I believe Vengroff could make an attractive, beautiful home for those wanting to move to Florida and also be very profitable for the school district. Here's my worry, with the lawsuits Nail Communities has against them by homeowners, if they're chosen and they decide to break even the most ironclad contract with the schools, the legal fees would be substantial. And I can see us waving the white flag like we did with Charter Schools USA. With Vengroff, it's a no fuss, no muss for teachers and staff because the teachers and staff have enough going on. Nail Communities needs to fix the mess they have going on in Venice and let them keep contributing to political campaigns, but don't let them corrupt the school district with promises they don't appear to keep. I would love to see a prototype as soon as possible to get the ball rolling. Thank you.
Oh, teacher housing, that's great. She's like, uh, you guys are, uh, we're working on teacher housing and it seems like one of the people here is a real friendly with a developer or some other organization that doesn't really want the teacher housing and, um, because maybe they want that property. I don't know, who knows what it, you know, but this is, she's, there's no reason to like doubt what she's saying here. As far as like influence peddling and money and whatnot.
It's probably multiple layers, right? Yeah, strange bedfellows, um, there's folks on the board probably despise the idea of teacher housing or housing or any sort of support for teachers and, and the working class. Oh, but if their developer friends are the ones that are going to build the housing, then by all means, let's get some teacher housing. Oh, and it makes me look good politically, yay. Yeah, that's, that happens quite a bit, right? Shit doesn't get done until the skids are greased.
Or, you know, I could see a scenario where, oh, you know, we're going to do teacher housing and then all of a sudden there's no teachers living in that fucking housing, right?
Oh, for sure. Come on, yeah, absolutely.
Like a bait, like a, like a, we have a term, it's called the bait and switch. We, it's, it's a very common thing that people know about for a fucking reason, you know?
Yeah, we marketed it to teachers, we did every, all the things we were supposed to do that said in writing that we would do. But yeah, we just didn't get enough takers from, uh, from the teachers, they didn't want to live here. So yeah, we had to open it up, we had to make sure those rooms are filled.
We had to open it up and, uh, jack the rent up 25% because those are like non, non.
Non-affordable.
Yeah, they're non, you know, they're non, not the, the targeted group here, so I don't know what to tell you.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, but, uh, hey, we got a lovely apartment over here, would you like to take a look? Are you a teacher?
I heard one of you is rich as your, your kid seems to be 20, do they need an apartment? I've got one on the top floor for you.
Don't need an ADU.
I got time for one more before you skedaddle here.
Yeah, one more would be fine.
Thank you.
Depending how long they go, right? Three minutes.
And Barbara Olson.
Oh, I might want to hear Barbara too, I don't know. Oh, Richard looks good.
Thank you, I'm a 22 year resident of Sarasota and, uh, also a retired, um, professional child welfare, uh, worker. I'm also Unitarian Universalist in Sarasota and.
That means atheist.
My most important belief is the inherent worth and dignity of every.
Well, it's more like, it's not like God, yes, or God, no. It's like, well, God maybe, but how, how you doing?
Yeah, like gods, yeah, all gods are cool, as long as there's only one for each of you.
Right. Want to play, want to play a board game? We're gonna have a barbecue, you want to come?
I'm sorry. The game, the game of life.
Everyone on the dais, that includes everyone in.
We have, we have a DSA meeting here, you want to come to the DSA? We're, uh, you know, you don't have to be, you don't have to be socialist yourself, but you could come to the DSA. We also, the humanists meet here, um, we have coffee.
If you're a human or you're a Democrat, you don't have to be socialist or, you know, have an agenda.
Whatever, we, you know, we, we got to pay the bills somehow, there aren't that many of us.
Some people like Pandil, say, what are you gonna do?
Audience, that includes all of our children in school, their parents, their teachers and their support staff. I hold this very dear. I am more important, I am more concerned about actions of individuals, but I respect all individuals. Having said that regarding public comment, it is that very respect that must be mutual between both the board and the community. When I look at the diverse audience here and the amount of passion, this is a true representation of Sarasota and what we hold most dear. I know that Ms. Ziegler, Mr. Enos, and Ms. Marinelli have on record, gone on record as promising to expand access to public comment and that they need to make good on that promise. And if you don't want this level of public comment, as others have said, then stop doing all the things that are causing such a community uproar and instead focus on the educational issues that are most dear to us. Finally, I also want to speak, but, but not most, not, not less importantly, is the Don't Say Gay bill or law that had, that we have been functioning under for some time. Harm is being done every day to our students as a result of the Don't Say Gay law. I understand that we're waiting every day for best practices to come down from Tallahassee, but while we're waiting, more harm is being done. You all are capable of taking action now to start undoing that harm and start the healing process. We need the superintendent and the school board to take leadership on this, specifically for eliminating the outing policy, encouraging teachers to uncover their bookshelves and encourage librarians to bring diverse books back into the schools and to create a comprehensive inclusion policy for the district, similar to Hillsborough County. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What a nice old man.
Barbara Olson.
Teachers need to uncover their bookshelves.
So, I mean, I think he, I, I think he was probably metaphorical or whatever, right?
Hopefully, yeah.
Yeah. I, he's like a former child welfare worker and he's retired. That is the, the nicest, you probably couldn't ask for a nicer fucking neighbor, like you gotta live right next door to. Great, great in a house if he's in your housing neighborhood, even better if he's your neighbor in an apartment. Cause you'll run into him a lot more often in the hallway or whatever.
Hundred percent, and probably a great neighbor too, probably one of those guys who, you know, takes care of, looks out for the, the kids in the neighborhood and the apartment complex, right? And we need more people like that. But unfortunately, there's a shortage of teachers, there's a shortage of all these types of folks right now.
So what, you know, and, uh, before we end the podcast part here, I just wanted to, you know, people who are listening to Down Ballot Podcast, all three of you, um, I'm just kidding, more than three people listen to the Down Ballot.
Let's just be honest, it's just the one.
It's just, okay, it's just the one.
And oh, and us too, right? We're listening, so I think it's, there's three.
Yeah, yeah, plus there's a, you know, a couple dozen people in the, in the chat right now. But this is, uh, this is what we do live after Down Ballot every, every Tuesday. If you can't tune in live, time zones are just like, I don't want to, I don't, I don't play video games, I'm not going to Twitch. We're also on YouTube and the Book of Faces, um, but nobody listens there, watches there. You could also just, you know, five bucks a month, you'd be a Patreon or replx.store. This gets emailed to you along with a bunch of other, uh, extended, uh, listening things, some of which are up to seven hours.
It's super fun, I do download them occasionally and it helps me sleep.
But I can't imagine what your dreams must be, I can't imagine.
But I also, I also get well-informed, uh, so I, we encourage you to listen to and download all of the shows on this network because it's all, it creates a mosaic of dirt that you, you need in your life.
It's, you know what, it's all, um, it's all becoming the same potato. Remember when we used to have a collection of potatoes? Now it's like becoming.
It's all one potato.
It's like a potato salad.
Potato salad.
No raisins in it, I promise.
Well, yeah, I was gonna say, is it, is it a vinegar based or a mayonnaise based salad? Because it makes all the difference.
Ooh, oil and vinegar based.
Oh, very nice, nice, with some capers maybe?
Ooh, not, not for me, but we make two. That's a great thing, that's a great thing about potato salad, you could make, make your own. Anyway, you want to read the show out?
Absolutely, uh, well, this is the councilman and producer Dave is always coming to you live on Down Ballot and in the podcast universe, uh, please listener, viewer, keep, keep up, keep on keeping on. Stay tuned for more public comment with producer Dave on until one or two or three in the morning or whenever he decides to pass out. Hopefully not live on camera. Make sure that you get vaxxed, that you're wearing a mask, pants are completely optional. And we're gonna have a little musical interlude, but we get started and so turn your lights red. And we'll see you next week, 7:30 Pacific for the next live episode of Down Ballot. All derp is local. Have a great week. Peace out.